Good evening, everybody. It's February 18th, 2020, and this is our monthly meeting of the Planning Commission. Members present are, let's see, myself, Mr. Watson, Ms. Kazanis, Mr. Boyd, Ms. Zalik, and we know for sure that Mr. Staley is absent tonight. Sorry that we have a very short meeting, hopefully. And coming down the hallway is Ms. Lamberty. Also, our planner is here, Susmita Etota, right? Good, okay, I've got it. If everybody looks at our agenda, you will see that we are very short with items tonight. In the future, I would like us to pull together a couple of subjects that we can discuss within the agenda, so we can start looking at items like the P O C D. We can start looking on other items, text, where we're being asked to come up with text. We really need to start making more work sessions for that, where we can actually, I believe, we could move down to the table even and sit and work on something. So what I'm looking for, everybody, my email is on the group list. If everybody can email me their thoughts of what they think that they'd like to work on, we're not going to, whatever we're doing is going to be brought before the committee in a formalized fashion, but what I'm saying is essentially it's a way for us to do some of our homework in public, where we can start collecting information. It's in the same range of what Susmita was asking last week, when she asked you to come up with some of your major ideas. Something that's doable in a one-hour session, where you could maybe come and give a 15-minute presentation, we could give our input on it, we could take that information and forward it to Susmita. I think that would be a good way for the planning to have relevance. Otherwise, this month, we don't have a lot of relevance in the town of Stratford. We have one item on the agenda that we're dealing with, and I don't think I've seen that in my three or four years of hanging around the Planning Commission. So let's move ahead with what we do have. Not to forget, we do have the annual report for planning that Susmita has worked on, which is a lot of work. So that we actually need to look at, because I think if we can go through it and just, even just get the key topics, particularly for our new members, it will give you a better idea of the kind of items that we've been dealing with. And you'll also see she's included a tick list of how many items in what areas we covered. So I think that is also something pretty valuable for you to see. My assumption is that everybody's reading all this material before we get here, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the first thing we need to do is, I'm looking for a motion of approval of minutes for last second. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Great.
There are two minutes.
There are two sets of minutes.
Yes, one is the administrative session minutes, and the other is the organizational meeting minutes. You have to vote on both.
We did not get here.
Well, I did include in the package. If you look at the package, you have your administrative session meetings, and then you have organizational meeting minutes.
Oh, it's all in the same, it's all in the same package?
Yes.
Okay. So the vote that we just took was up for the monthly meeting. Now can we take a vote on the administrative meeting? That's motion to approve. Anybody second? Christina has second. Anybody, all in favor? Anybody opposed? And they both pass. Anything else?
That's it, Vinnie.
Okay.
We should amend the rules, I mean waive the rules when it come under other items to discuss annual report, because it was not on the agenda. It's a last-minute item.
That, okay, I'm going to ask that we waive the rule. Do you want to do that now? Shall we?
Yes, since we don't have anything from 2 to 8, if you can waive the rules for 2, 8, under other items, to include the annual report for 2019, we can discuss that right now.
Yes, can we, under implementation?
I'm still not understanding what you're asking. What, a wave of rules to add what?
Annual report discussion, which is not placed on the agenda.
Is that again under other items?
Yes, under other items.
Motion to waive the rules to add the annual report to the agenda? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Everybody said yes. Do we, and do you want to do that right now?
Yeah.
Out of order? So everybody have a copy of that?
It's in it.
I had a copy of it.
It's in that plastic bag, if you open that.
No, no, I had gone through it all, though.
Okay. Oh.
Okay.
So may I go ahead and discuss this?
Sure.
Okay. So according to state statutes, the Planning Commission is required to file an annual report every year with the town clerk. Last year, too, we did, in January, right after our January meeting. And this year, again, I compiled a list of projects and grants that we wrote and, you know, we worked on. I'll quickly walk you through this. We did, you know, in 2017, the town engineer has applied for a pre-disaster mitigation grant with FEMA for the dike near the water pollution control facility. So we followed up on that aggressively last year, and we made sure we reached out to FEMA Region One folks and connected with them, and the state has mitigation services staff, and we arranged a field visit for them to the facility, because they wanted to come down and visit the site and review the types of permitting that are involved in case the grant is awarded, and, you know, look at the condition of the dike, meet with the staff. And this is all a cursory visit to awarding the grant. We did not get an official award yet, but it looks like we're on the positive side of things, because, you know, they took the effort to come down from Boston. And we're also, you know, when you look at the list of grantees online on the webpage, we are noted as being considered, which is a good thing. And the federal funding cycle will reopen again, I think, this July. And when it reopens, when, you know, there are some projects that haven't been funded since 2017, and those may be reconsidered for funding, and we may be one of those. So we're waiting to hear good news on that, hopefully. And then, you know, as part of these discussions, we also requested FEMA to point us to some new grants that are out there, and the state has mitigation services staff, were very kind, and they worked with us very closely in applying for two grants this year, two sets of grants. One is the flood mitigation assistance grant, and the other is the pre-disaster mitigation assistance grant. These both are a little different, because the way the funding is allocated, the ratios are different. So in an FMA grant, a severe repetitive loss property gets 100% funded, whereas in a PDM grant, it gets 75% funded, and there should be a 25% local match. And again, if it's not a severe repetitive loss, but just a repetitive loss property in an FMA grant, it gets 90% funded, and in the PDM, it's the same match, 75 to 25. So we applied for a repetitive loss analysis for the town of Stratford, to look at all areas that get flooded repeatedly and analyze strategies for flood mitigation, short-term strategies.
May I ask a question here? Is this where we have the mitigation strategies for our wet, our, I have to get the correct terminology, for our encroaching wetlands? Is that covering the same areas that you would find in that report? If you go to Planning's main page, there is a report in there that I'd never seen before, that actually goes into what areas of town are suffering the most and will suffer the most through 2080. Is that essentially sticking in, working in those same areas?
Well, this is purely looking at everything south of Barnum Avenue and until the edge of the town boundary towards the water. And essentially, the scope of work that we are trying to accomplish here is look at all properties that are flooded, that have repetitive flood claims, flood loss claims. We have that list from FEMA. Reach out to the property owners and conduct workshops with them, and if they are willing to allow a consultant that we hire to come and look at where the flooding happens in the properties, we would essentially take the consultant and investigate those sites and see what are the short-term strategies that they can adopt, and what are the long-term strategies for those, because some properties may require more than just fixing things, but some may actually have, you know, small fixes, they need like, you know, installing flood gates, stuff like that, which is not addressed by our coastal resiliency plan. Coastal resiliency plan looks at the bigger picture. We are trying to narrow it down and see which areas, and also have this discussion with residents, is it, does it make sense to rebuild these sites over and over, or maybe keep some of these as retreat areas and, you know, move the development elsewhere in the town, and, you know, that's a discussion we must have with the residents. Yes.
Do you have consultants identified already, or is FEMA going to make you go out to bid?
Well, first thing is, we have to get the notice of grant award.
I'm just saying.
And if we get that, then we have to reach out to consultants at that point.
Okay, all right.
And then we also, there was a property owner who approached our office, who lives on Washington.
Can I ask one other question on the previous one? So what you're saying is, these are essentially, we're working here on this grant with repetitive loss claims, properties that have been already in the past, that have already gone through several, that are reaching the limit of FEMA's claims loss, I assume, which, if everybody knows that after a certain period, you cannot file FEMA loss on those properties anymore. So it becomes purely the individual owner's burden at that point. Are we, we're not doing any look-forwards, any anticipated areas, because I know those areas are going to grow more.
That's what, when I said we are looking at areas where we would consider retreat and ask people if they would be interested.
So although we're not necessarily, we're not funding any real projects, we are beginning to do that investigation, because that was a big part of the resiliency research, and they left it up to us, saying, here's where you need to start.
Yes, and this would identify those areas that are ready for acquisition. So if there are properties that are willing for, you know, keeping it as a retreat area, and if the community together has identified, and the property owner is willing to actually, you know, do some necessary mitigation as recommended in the strategies report, then in the future, funding grants, like, you know, every year, FMA and PDM grants get opened up, and we can apply for those implementation strategies.
I have a question. You're going through number one, bullet point two. Did we get the 120,000? Is that the one?
We applied for it, and we're waiting for it.
So that one's pending. Secondly, on the first bullet point, 2.7 million to elevate the dike at WPCF, did we get that?
No, but we both are pending.
Both are pending.
And both are, we are awaiting responses from FEMA, yes.
Okay, and when do we anticipate the?
I think the water pollution one, hopefully by June, July, and the $120,000 for repetitive loss analysis, that might be sometime around October, November this year.
Okay, and last point, you mentioned some property owners might, you might be able to retreat to certain properties. I didn't quite understand what you meant.
Well, I meant like those properties, I mean, I don't want to jump ahead in this, because we haven't conducted any analysis, but when you look at other towns, sometimes there are areas where they get so repeatedly flooded that the value of mitigating the property doesn't make any sense, either to the property owner or to the community. And in some cases, that property owner is allowed to move elsewhere, you know, the developments, in some cases, there would be transfer of development rights, in some cases, it's just, you know, keeping it open space, which means that the town acquires, you know, the property and, you know, keeps it as open space, or in some cases, it may be just elevating the property to above-base flood elevation. So we don't know what makes sense. I mean, it's all, you know, it's a valuable taxpayer property, and, you know, the town doesn't want to keep anything open, because we need the taxes. But it's just a matter of, you know, the consultant going there and having conversations and ensuring that the right strategy works.
So for example, something on Surf Avenue, Roosevelt Avenue, or West Broad, right under the bridge, that used to be a dog food store, that's repeatedly flooding, is that like an example of they're just tired of fixing it, and the town would assume that property?
No, I wouldn't say that the town would assume the property. It's, I mean.
A little more copy.
It's just, maybe we would propose a mitigation strategy where we would say, we have to elevate this property, and say, you know, request, I mean, like, if you come to the next bullet, the third bullet, we did assist three property owners in applying for funding to elevate their properties, and if this becomes successful, that's something that we want to continue doing for future pipeline properties. And like, if you look at Milford's coastline, you look at properties on Seaside Avenue in Milford, a lot of them have been elevated after Hurricane Sandy, and that's a good precedent, and maybe something like that.
I have a question about the third bullet point here, in that the engineering department has essentially handled this without it ever coming to planning to discuss what the project is.
Oh.
I know that the idea of mitigation, the idea of deciding what is going to be remediated, what is going to be storm-proofed or flood-proofed, is really a key issue of our democracy, because at some point, we're going to have to decide, we're going to have to make value judgments of who gets the assistance in terms of grants, and where does the town decide, what is the greatest amount of work that we can do for our dollar? And do we want a dam here that protects this neighborhood, or do we want to put a dike here that will protect these three houses? There's a big discussion that needs to take place, and policy that needs to be set in order for our town to feel like there's equality. And it's going to become a, it will be a fighting issue as we approach the next decade. I might not be here for it, but the way we set it up now is the way that we're going to start implementing how people come to the town for that kind of help.
This was.
I understand if this is a test and everything else.
No, 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 I just want to, you know, there is a misunderstanding here, and I just want to correct you.
Okay.
This was in the coastal resiliency plan, the, you know, idea of elevating properties that are repetitively flooded, has been recommended in the coastal resiliency plan. It was vetted out and discussed in the coastal resiliency planning process, and it's an officially adopted document. Now, coming to actually applying for the grant itself, there is a short window of timeframe before which we have to, you know, fill out the grant application and send it in a timely manner, and not often do this coincide with the Planning Commission meeting schedules, and this is private property. This is not even public property.
I understand, but the, that particular Washington, this is Washington Parkway, correct? Washington Parkway, a portion of it is resilient, because it's 17 to 19 feet above sea level, but a portion of it is three feet above sea level. And when we were looking at the resiliency documents, they had talked about the need, essentially, for it to be fully resilient, for a four-foot seawall to be built on top of the existing seawall, and then eventually, a storm gate that goes above that. So we're talking about nine feet. When you go into the same area in Bridgeport, they're talking about a 30-foot wall. So partly, my question is, are we helping someone for the storms of yesterday? Is that area going to be resilient 10 years from now? That's the questions that Planning needs to start answering.
Yes, and if I may answer that question for you, that Parkway, you know, I understand that the recommendations you have said, but the road dips at one point, and then it elevates. So the dipping at that intersection, there is a couple of homes there that often are flooded, and, you know, at this point, the short-term strategy is to help these property owners, because the owner was, you know, she came to my office, she was literally in tears, because she said she wasn't aware, when she bought the home, that it would be flooded this badly. She knew some kind of flooding would happen, but when she was actually there, I mean, it's not being emotional about this, but looking at things in a practical way, that the homeowner is now all by herself in the home, and if needed, when there is an emergency, not a single emergency vehicle can come and access the site, because of the way it is right now. And I do understand we need to have conversations, and that's why we are doing this alternative analysis study, that will bring us to those conversations. But in the interim, we have to do something to help the property owners to at least stay afloat until we finish our conversations. And this is something that will get you to that point, where at least, you know, the person is alive, and she's safe, and when she needs help, she can access help.
The point that I would like to make.
Oh.
Okay, go ahead, and then we'll go.
I just want to clarify, please, back to what Mr.
Watson.
Watson.
Boyd.
Oh, Boyd.
Talking about retreating, I want to understand specifically what you were saying, and I heard you say, by acquisition. Are we talking about individual homeowners who may have had multiple instances of flooding and had tower control assistance to rebuild?
Yes.
And now we're thinking we might acquire?
No, we are not thinking we would acquire the property. I just gave examples of what kind of mitigation strategies are typically, you know, possible from a study like this. Having said that, I don't want to scare any resident here, saying that now the town's coming after you to acquire your property. That's not the intent. Yeah, that's not the intent of the study. The intent of the study is to understand and, you know, have real conversations with people, like Mr. Watson has said here, and, you know, talk to them and know what their problems are, because we are looking at things from a 50-foot elevated scale, and I want to get down to the real eye level and see, property to property, what is the help that is needed, so that when future grant announcements are made, we have a pipeline of projects to put forward, because right now, we don't know what we're asking for, we don't have any base analysis for it. The interim analysis between a seawall and a residence, you know, flooding situation.
My next question, I'm going to ask, where you discussed, or the road was divested, is that also related to these three properties in Washington?
Yes.
So if this 700,000, there is a right here, is it with that, or with the area?
No, it's the three property owners. We reached out to those property owners on Washington Parkway, because that was identified as one of the high priority areas in the coastal resiliency plan, and it made sense that we should start there, because there are places where emergency vehicles also cannot access. And so that was the priority area when we reached out, and then eventually, you know, because we can only apply for so much, for the next round, we want to apply for more.
Right. Just a point of clarification, that particular grant program is really for property owners, like specifically for property owners, but the applicant has to be the municipality? So that's why it looks like we're applying on behalf of the homeowner, because we are, because FEMA makes you.
Thank you, Kristin. I appreciate that.
No, that's okay, I remember that one quite too well.
Yes, and it is, because it's federal money, they don't want to give it directly to the property owner, they want the town to manage the grant for them.
Then the question I had, you had mentioned before that in the coastal resiliency plan, there is actually like a mini pipeline of identified priority properties, so that tend to flood over and over again. Are they properties, or are they just, like Sandra was saying, areas of town?
Both.
Okay, all right.
So if we walk through this list, I can come to that part, where we are also looking at the seawalls that you were talking about.
And the coastal resiliency document lists both individual properties, identifies individual property, but it also lists neighborhoods that are susceptible. So, and it gives two strategies. One is a town strategy, one is a state strategy, one is a town strategy, and one is an individual strategy. All three have to be going into effect, because in some cases, there is nothing that an individual can do. We're going to have to say, either your neighborhood's going to get flooded, or we're going to undergo building a dike. There is no, there is no second, that's what we're going to have, we're going to be doing one of those two things. One is going to have to be funded through CIP funds, hopefully transportation funds, hopefully infrastructure funds, if they ever get that through the federal government. That is where a lot of that money is going to come from eventually, because I can't imagine Stratford ever coming up with the millions. If you take 700,000 to do three houses, they've identified about 1,200 houses in Stratford that are in this same category of constant flooding. So take 1,200 and multiply it by 250,000 to raise a house. No one is going to be able to afford that. So that's not the most practical thing, but I understand, I appreciate, because what we don't have, where Milford does have, we don't have many examples of resiliency here. We don't have many examples of elevation and of taking strategies and putting them into effect. So in that sense, I support this 100%.
And then one other important thing I forgot to mention is that my main focus of doing this study is to actually understand what kind of zoning changes are required. Like, you know, our zoning does not, as of right, include flood mitigation right now. So when a property owner has to elevate their property, they still have to abide by the zoning standards or go for a waiver, and in some areas where, like you said, if you want to analyze, do we really want to keep building these areas or keep them as open space? That's an important land use issue. That needs a community conversation, and maybe what remains, remains for now, but for the future, if that property has gone, do we want to rebuild here, or, you know, zone it as open space or conservation space? These are some of the questions that we want to discuss as a community with this grant.
I want to see how sensible the law might be, and what it would say about the rest of it.
Yeah, well, yeah, and these are some important decisions that we cannot take without talking to people, understanding the situation. Yes.
My next question, is the point of this plan, is it a draft of this plan, like, is our conversation going to prove this plan?
Well, it's just informing everyone what the planning department is working on, like, we have conversations here every month, but, you know, putting them all on paper and saying, okay, this is how we are implementing this stuff. So you don't have to vote on every item, but you have to actually approve the document, so it can be filed with the town clerk.
It's all done all right here?
It's all done, yes, yes.
This was, this has to be done yearly by state law.
So this was all of last year's work.
Instead of conversation, we're having that every item, seems to be kind of a point, right? This is all done all right?
Except, no, a lot of these are new initiatives that are just coming in, that we, that absolutely represent things that we are going to.
Okay. The fourth one, we worked closely with Massachusetts Institute of Technology faculty and staff to avail a grant, again, to study the same thing, short-term resilience strategies. Even though we did not get this grant last year, we are continuing to collaborate with this team to seek other grant opportunities that may become available on AMI Day campus. And the next one is the one that I think will be of most interest to Mr. Watson. We have applied for a WRDA grant money, and they requested municipalities to offer a pipeline of projects that were worth at least 50 million or more. So we have applied for a bunch of projects proposed in the coastal resiliency plan, two separate sets. One is the access road and elevation of access road in nearby area, which is approximately 60 million, and the other one is looking at individual coastal resiliency projects like berms and seawalls across the town, which roughly amounts to 190 million. So we have to wait and see if this act gets funded through Congress, and if we will be considered. And if we are considered, then in Connecticut, it is a good win for us, like Bridgeport, Heska, and.
And you're saying that part of this is specifically elevation of the access road?
There are two projects that we suggested, either, you know, fund individual coastal resiliency projects that are across the coast, or just fund one project that elevates the access road, so it protects the employment growth district and the areas above. So access road is by the Great Meadows Marsh, near Lordship Boulevard, yes, yeah, so that one.
And you applied for a road and civil project, and what was your thoughts?
Yes, we gave our list of, we didn't apply, you know, our legislature just asked us what our pipeline of projects are, and we sent a draft to them, and they're reviewing it, and I think they have more discussions to have.
Susmita, I don't see here, but one of the things that I remember clearly, speaking with the. with the engineers on the resiliency project is the one thing that they could not determine and they said it would require a lot more work is the vulnerability of Stratford to water flow. Given that we're surrounded by water on three sides, on the Bridgeport side with Thomas Channel or whatever it's called, on Lewis, yeah, Lewis Channel, and then the coast and then the Housatonic gives us three different waterways. And when we have storms and as we get more into monthly flooding, we are going to have water flow in multiple directions. That's part of the problem like during Sandy, the majority of the storm did not come from the shore. It came up the Housatonic and came over by the WPCA and flooded your neighborhood. And so you can't put a dike in there because you're going to trap water in certain neighborhoods while you're creating other vulnerable, you're protecting a vulnerable neighborhood might be all that water is simply going to the next neighborhood over. And that needs to be designed townwide. We need to say that this is our system, if I'm correct. And I have not seen yet in any of this, any granting that will get us the engineering. Bridgeport is putting in major monies in designing that, designing a loop that goes across the, where the current park is, that comes up around, up through where the old, I call it the oil channel. It's where all the coal barges and everything is going up that side. They're going to have effectively block that off. When the water comes there, the water is all going to go back to Stratford. Their 30-foot dike is going to become an impediment for the water freely moving out, that it's going to freely move out into Stratford territory. So we need to really look on it.
Is it a done deal?
Well, nothing is a done deal because none of it's funded, but they are in the pipeline before us because they one have, it's in a, it's in a very high, I mean.
Sue them if they're not.
It's going to be that way all in every coastal community of the U.S. or the world. So eventually suing is not going to get us anywhere. We have got to find ways to effectively say, that's my personal feeling is we've got to start working on these issues. Right. And the one thing with FEMA, they were really here to establish that. When I sat down with meetings, it was communities from Madison to Norwalk. We all talked about, we all have exactly the same problems and we all talked about how we can do projects that, because flooding doesn't stop at our town line. You know, if we put up a dike, we're going to be flooding Milford the same way. So we all have got to find a way to work with water because water's going to go where gravity says, not where we want it to go. Well, I will tell you, the New York State is putting in this seawall across the end of Long Island Sound, which will do nothing except trap the water, keeping from going into the Bronx, but it will raise our stormwater elevations a foot to two feet. So when all the water goes into this Long Island Sound and pushes this way, we're going to be, we're going to see the, we're going to suffer from that.
That's where I'm on the Housatonic River and all of the docks and all everything is underwater and sand. You couldn't see marsh anywhere. It was just like this area.
And flooding north.
It came from, well, it's not.
Yep.
And as the river narrows, those people are more.
And that's going to happen more frequently as we move forward. That's why you can't say that it's just, it's not just a coastal, it's river flooding also that we really have to be concerned with.
So basically what you're saying is we have to work collaboratively or it becomes a race to build a seawall?
I think so. I do think that we've got to work collaboratively and thank heavens that we have Sismithe here because it's planners talking to each other that's going to make that happen. But as a planning commission, we've got to be sensitive to help have the conversation for her. Because we can't push her into the, it's a political conversation because it's people's lives that we're talking about. We've got to find gentle ways of talking about this so that everybody buys into it. I live at Worcester Pond. My pond is overflowing and filled and backed up and needs to be dredged and all the kinds of things, but it is not the highest priority in Stratford. I recognize that, but it is a priority because it floods District Five. So we've got to answer all of these because by the time it gets down to District Four, we have massive flooding and then the sound comes in and adds to it. And that's why we get those hideous storm events on, what is the road that? Well, on Surf, that Surf that floods every time it rains. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
That we each sort of like tag the things that in the report, the system that is going through and maybe start crafting some of the work groups that, and discussions that you were talking about before, like from this report, like the things that need to be acted on this coming year, that we maybe sort of organize some of those discussions.
Why don't we do, that sounds like a great idea.
Like is that what you were?
Well, that's kind of what I was trying to say before. And it's, my idea was ill-formed, I'm sorry, but I, I, yes, we need to do that, but let's not cut Sismithe out of it because she's going to know better, is that something that we need to be working on in terms of what they're working on? So if it's something, anything that we're doing should have as much relevance to today as possible. Hopefully, in terms of granting, if planning can send a statement that Sismithe can use, it will bear more weight than if engineering sends a statement that Sismithe is doing, I believe. Am I correct?
Well, I think both are equally important.
Well, we'll both do it then, but.
So let me quickly run through this list. We did get our hazard mitigation plan adopted last year in October and we have a town council resolution and FEMA adoption letter. Now we're good for the next five years for any discretionary funding that's out there. Our CRA status is also in good standing because we have an adopted hazard mitigation plan. We also, I was the staff to the Shakespeare Task Force last year and we conducted a visioning for the site that was burnt down. And we had involved nearly 700 residents in the conversations and we have some draft recommendations, I would say, like three recommendations that they gave to the committee, based on which we are now in the process of ongoing discussions with the subcommittees who are exploring these options in depth. Then we also participated in regional bike share meetings with the MetroCog and a draft RFP template was debbed through these meetings to advertise for interested vendors. The only reason we aren't going ahead right now is because the market is slow and a lot of companies are pulling out of the already existing markets. So we are just waiting and seeing how this will play out for our region and we have to collaborate with neighboring towns because we are such a small market ourselves. So we have to find ways to actually do this creatively with neighboring towns. And most of them are at different stages in their politics, like some have some newly elected officials that have to be brought up to speed on this. We also partnered with CROG last year at the Shakespeare Festival. We had a booth for educating residents on bicycle and pedestrian opportunities in the town and what we are doing in terms of encouraging these opportunities. We had a complete streets map there. We asked people where else they would like to see biking and walkways and we got a lot of feedback. Then we also applied for a placemaking arts grant at Paradise Green. You know, we think that will bring a lot of value for the town in terms of, you know, increasing the vibrancy of that center there because you have a street that is by the green and there's retail nearby. There are some events like farmers markets happening on the green. So if we can have a street mural and pedestrianize that streets for some days in the summer and have some benches out there for people to interact with each other, it would make a neat little town center. And we are trying to, you know, establish that image there. And we also worked with MetroCog and regional transportation meetings, trying to identify funding for future projects for flood mitigation and infrastructure improvements or town engineer routinely request funding for elevating bridges. And I think we asked for Broadbridge Avenue recently and it's being considered and reviewed right now. We are also working with Connecticut Department of Transportation on obtaining a commitment to fund letter for our Complete Streets Phase One implementation along Main Street from, all the way from Bottom Avenue to Harvey Place in front of Town Hall. Just yesterday, we received a set of comments from DOT after three months, I think literally. And I'm hoping this will be our last set, which we will address and move forward in getting that commitment to fund letter. I know, it's because of the holidays and other things, they couldn't get their staff together. We worked, I also serve on Greenway Committee as a staff and Harold Watson also is on the Greenway Committee. Last year, one of the successes is that Phase Two went out for bidding and pretty soon we'll be seeing Phase Two on Elm Street connecting to West Broad, all the way from Beacon Point Road, near Tidhar River Condominions. And we, I am also participating in Governor's Task Force on Transit Oriented Development in Fairfield County. So right now, we are exploring opportunities on how to encourage affordable housing in Fairfield County. I'm part of a subcommittee that is looking at promoting efficiency and streamlining the permitting processes. So we would come up with a report sometime in June that the governor would take and, you know, implement in the next budget year. We finished our community rating system recertification successfully this January. We received a letter last year to put together all necessary paperwork. So we are now officially recertified. So we are again in good standing with the program, which means property owners can avail a discount of up to 10% on their all national flood insurance policies.
It was five, so now it's?
No, it was always 10. We're a Class Eight community. And we are continuing to implement our town plan of conservation and development by reviewing land use applications and staffing our boards and commissions regularly and making amendments to the zoning regulations as necessary. We are hopeful that sometime next year, we are going to start our plan of conservation and development update and, you know, get that adopted by 2024 again because it has to be updated once every 10 years. And the last time we adopted the document was in 2014. And this commission will serve a very significant role in that, you know, planning process because according to state statute, it's the planning commission that has to, you know, adopt the plan of conservation and development.
Sismithe, may I interrupt for a sec? I've been thinking about the P O C D and it exists only in this giant forum and for our new members, we don't have any more copies of it, I believe.
No, I don't have for myself too. I had to buy.
So could we, even if we have to pay for it, we need to get some kind of a text-based version of this.
It's online.
Yeah, but you can't open this document online.
You can.
And not use as a research tool.
Okay.
Because it's too big for the average screen to track down. And Pat Petuski tried very hard to make a smaller version of it, but then you couldn't read it. So we need to find a way to make this usable for us, but also for everybody else in town. Person that did it did a beautiful job graphically, but in terms of a practical document that's updatable, it is planning's responsibility. We could, we could be updating this right now. We don't have to wait 10 years. We can update it monthly if we wanted to, but it's not in a form that allows for updating. So we need to do something. We need to get some kind of a line item to get this translated into a text version so we can start looking at it and start bringing up our questions individually, even if we take individual pages or take individual chapters and say, we're going to look at this one because it has a lot of relevance right now. This area needs to be examined more. You can go in here, there's, the whole bike trail is in this document, but it doesn't necessarily reflect everything that's gone on and it should be updated. It doesn't reflect anything about cultural resiliency in this at all, I mean coastal resiliency at all.
Can we bring it to a print shop and get copies made of all of us?
That's what, that's what we did several years ago. That's what this is.
But since we need to update it anyway, whether we make the next version, you know, text or?
Well, I'm saying the act of rewriting it, we need something other than this unless someone wants to rewrite everything from the get-go.
I have a PDF of this and PDF can be converted into Word electronically and that, you know, can be used for rewriting the document.
Sorry, maybe going forward, it can be written in landscape that is this way instead of this way because it's easier to see maps in landscape. I agree. It would be better to have a thousand-page document than this page, this document. Right. It's just unwieldy. It, it. So if it's designed, it could be designed in landscape.
Is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. Is there a, when we do the P O C D rewrite, is that the venue where we would talk about what format it would be in?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think, you know, that's a question that we should ask the consultant, whether we want to do a rewrite or whether we want to rethink everything and start it from the scratch.
Maybe just have it be an interactive digital.
Yes.
Instead of messing with this because that way.
This is a legal document. That's the only thing.
No, it is still legal.
Okay. That's, that's, I mean, I do know that, in any case, go ahead.
And the last item that we accomplished last year is I serve as staff to Architectural Review Board. We developed a commercial design guidelines manual, which was adopted by the ARB Committee. It's being now used as a guide to review all commercial design applications and we did successfully review three properties last year and we're getting, I think we are going to get a lot more this year because we've had some preliminary discussions with interested applicants. In 2020, we look forward to continue to implement town P O C D. We definitely need to obtain that commitment to fund letter and move forward to the implementation part of Complete Streets. And we are continuing to seek new funding sources for coastal resiliency plan. We are, we have to start the next phase of planning for the Greenway Project now that Phase Two is out for bidding. We have a study called Greenways and Pathways that was done about a decade or more ago and it's time to revisit that study and look at recommendations and see what makes sense for the current market and demographic conditions. The town recently adopted an ordinance to establish a Stratford Housing Partnership and my goal is to staff this, to conduct a housing plan for Stratford because we don't know what are the housing preferences of our residents and have, because in many communities, because of the changing demographics, the housing preferences have changed. And are we meeting the market conditions? Is our housing affordable to all incomes? This is something that will be discussed in the plan, yes.
So do we have monies in our budget to do these studies or is that something we have to get a grant for to do that for these houses?
For the first one, we are doing through application review. For the second one, the budget is already assigned. So it's about getting that commitment to fund letter. That's it. Because I think $2.5 million have been allocated through lots of funding from the state.
This is for the next phase, the Paradise phase?
No, it's just for the Phase One.
So number two, we have?
We have funding. Number three, we are seeking funding. Number four, it's just having those conversations with the Greenway Committee on the next phase for now and see what makes sense. And then we don't have any funding yet for that. Number five, Stratford Housing Partnership. We are, I mean, I did apply for a CDBG grant this year for $25,000 to conduct this study. So I hope we get it. I don't know, last year we applied, we didn't get it.
That study, that will impact all residents?
Yes, that'll impact all residents of the town. Number six, we are going to work on that today a little bit, the Village Overlay District for commercial corridors, although I wish I had done more and reached out to more stakeholders, which I could not due to lack of time. But definitely bike parking standards are something we can, you know, easily adopt fairly quickly. I, to Mr. Watson's point on the commission coming up with things to discuss, even though it was supposed to be a short agenda today, we're still discussing only one item and we have two more items to discuss. So I would suggest that, you know, we do in increments. We would have, I mean, I suggest this commission to have a list of projects, but, you know, make sure that we attack one at a time, get it adopted and move forward to the next. Otherwise, you know, we're discussing everything, but nothing moves forward to the adoption phase. Number seven. Number seven, partner with neighboring municipalities to implement bike share, and we have to do it, and we have to figure out a way to do it, because right now, there are some communities, like I said, who are ready to move on and implement, but there are some who are not yet ready, and we need to find that bigger market for the vendors. Number eight, there will be a long-range transportation planning process, that's what I heard, and if that's going to be there, we have to be, you know, participating in that and making sure our voice is heard in terms of our transit needs. Number nine...
Does that mean city busing? What does that?
It's multimodal.
Yes.
All forms of transportation.
Connecticut Transportation Plan was, the draft is available online. If you look at the projects proposed, one of the projects is to have rapid frequency transit corridor on Boston, I'm sorry, on Barnum Avenue, from Boston Post Road, connecting Milford, Stratford, Bridgeport, so, and New Haven. So, if that gets funded, that's one of the projects that...
Would that be a bus or a streetcar? What would that be?
Bus.
So, that's not Connecticut Transit? That would be like the, like in Middletown, those fast-track buses, something like that?
Something like that, yeah.
There is a bus that does that now, but...
Yeah.
It's a bus twice a day, it's not...
Right. Up in Middletown, they have...
They're talking about doing here.
A bus that looks like a train. It's a fast track, so it stops just like a train station, but it's buses. They have it all through Middletown with, with defined lanes that run between Middletown, New Britain, and it's, I mean, it's pretty...
It's like, it's like, it's like high-speed or light rail without the rail.
Right.
That's what is the study for. They will come up with a feasibility analysis and let us know what it takes, if, if at all, this moves forward in the budget, in the state budget, and it gets funded. Let's, I'm not sure if it gets funded right now. The last one, if we get that $120,000, we have to start the planning process sometime this fall on the alternative analysis. So, as you can see, there'll be a lot of meaningful work for this group here to participate in, in the long-range planning efforts of the town. And besides this, everything else I have, there's only one thing I couldn't fix in this report, which I will go back and fix, and if everything else is okay with you, I'll file with the town clerk. The one thing I'm talking about is regarding zoning permits and letters of compliance. I asked our zoning enforcement officer to give me the actual numbers for last year, and he needed assistance from our office secretary, and she was out because she has been sick. So, we couldn't update those numbers yet, but I might just get those numbers from him tomorrow and just update them and file it with the town clerk.
Any comments, anybody?
I think it'll be nice to have a word on this and get it approved. On the zoning permits and letters of compliance.
Do I hear a second? Second?
Sorry, second.
All in favor? Anybody opposed? Unanimous?
Bike parking regulations, proposed bike parking regulations in the end. So, I have a two-page draft on the bike parking regulations in your packet, all the way at the end. It's stuck in there, yes. It was not emailed, and it was just put together, because I was reaching out to all of our neighboring towns. None of them have bicycle parking regulations at the moment, except for the bigger-sized municipalities like New Haven, Stamford. You know, Fairfield doesn't have it, and Milford doesn't have it, Orange doesn't have it, Shelton doesn't have it. They do encourage private developments to have bike racks, but there is no regulation in place. So, I pulled out some examples from other regions, like the Capital Region Council of Governments, that includes Hartford and 38 other towns in its vicinity. They have something called Sustainable Land Use Code Project, a guide for municipalities. In that guide, they had draft bicycle, I mean, not draft, but, you know, recommended bicycle parking regulations. So, the first piece that I cut and pasted in this handout, which says Bicycle Parking Regulations Adapted from Sustainable Land Use Code Project, page 29, is the piece that I pulled out from that guide. And in that guide, it says, "Developments shall provide at least one bike rack, locker, or bicycle parking facility designed to accommodate parking spaces for at least four bicycles, plus additional or larger facilities designed to accommodate parking spaces for at least two additional bicycles for each 10 vehicles per..." So, I think this is a little confusing, the way it is written. And so, I went and I reached out to them, and I asked, "Did any of your towns have adopted the bicycle parking regulations?" So, they pointed me to South Windsor and Manchester, and South Windsor has a population of 25,000 people. Unfortunately, these were wrongly stapled. That's why the first page comes second in your order. So, South Windsor Regulation Section 6.7.3 has been cut and pasted here. Then I also asked Town of Manchester, and their staff says they did not adopt anything, whereas the region says they did adopt something, and the region said it's one bike parking spot per 25 off-street spaces. And then, I went ahead and looked at other towns in other states, and Massachusetts had a good example with, I was looking at similar-sized or lesser population, definitely not more population, because the ridership will be different. And I got the example of Town of Lexington in Massachusetts. Then I also looked at City of Rockwell in Maryland, that has bicycle parking spaces for short-term and long-term, you know, the recommendations for short-term and long-term. But what I liked about this is it has by use, and I thought maybe we can work out something that's a combination of what the other towns have in terms of how these bicycles have to be placed, where they should be located, how high they should be, and what the design should be. But in terms of the actual numbers themselves, maybe look at the Rockwell, Maryland example, and come up with our estimate of what we think is ideal for the Town of Stratford by use. And if you do not agree with me, I'm in, I'm open to just writing it in a more general way.
May I make a suggestion? I've, I've read a lot of Complete Streets examples on this from across the country in terms of, in terms of planning, particularly, we're, we're looking for retro, I mean, retrofitting existing spaces. There is a, a lot of communities have taken simply saying that for every retail center, every commercial center, every park, there must be the equivalent of one parking space devoted to bicycle parking. That, within that space, which is usually, what, 10 by 20 or 7 by, 8 by 20?
Seven.
You can get it, you can get enough bike racks in there for 20, 30 bikes. And if they don't need it, you still are, you still have a safety zone, and you, but you also have the ability to create something that everybody in town who gets on a bike knows, "I'm going to look for the bike parking spot," so that we would have consistency in getting people to understand it. But even people in cars and everywhere else, they would say, "Oh, I can't park there." That's the mark. It's the, it's the bike parking spot, the equivalent of the shopping cart in, at Stop and Shop, the space in Stop and Shop. And then, we could essentially cut through. If they don't need, if they're never going to have bikes there, that bike could sit there with one bike rack in it, and for the few lonely souls who go there right now, it would be used for that. But use would determine, just like at the railroad station, we started there, we had one bike rack. Well, that became quickly two bike racks, and now we need to have a whole storage shed there, because people really are using it. It would be a good way for us to, I think, not get caught up in the...
Square footage.
The square footage, and da-da-da, and it also would not present itself, because what I'm interested in is getting buy-in from businesses. And this would allow the business to essentially take some control over this. If we say to them, "You've got to take one parking spot, and you need to have bike, bike racks there." And we don't even have to say how many, because their customers are going to start saying, "I can't park my bike here, because you don't have enough space." Then they're going to come and complain, because I assume we're not buying the bike racks, right? It's going to be the individual businesses that will do it. Yes.
No, I, I was, the question is, we're talking about bike racks, I agree with you. Instead of saying one per, it's easy to convert a parking spot or convert one handicap spot, if you will. It's easier to do that to get 10 bikes. The other question, the infrastructure of riding a bike, does the town then have to have dedicated bike lanes for those said bikes that you're going to be riding? Because there are no established bike lanes.
It's the chicken and the egg.
Right, so, we're talking about parking a bike, there's no place to ride them.
So, right now, people still bike on Main Street. The other day, there was a person with his child, who's of your daughter's age. Both were riding, and they were right in front of my car, and I had to, you know, stop because there was a child riding on the street. And as much as we think that we need dedicated infrastructure, it's happening anyway without that. And definitely, we would be getting our Phase One of Complete Streets, hopefully by next year, in front of Town Hall, and we would have our Phase Two connection of Greenway all the way from Waterfront to, on Elm Street, to the town center. So, at least for a T O D district, I see a future there to require bicycle parking spaces, because what's happening is there is these new developments, you know, they're coming, the developers are coming with their applications, and I'm looking at our regulations, and they don't require them to provide any bike parking spaces. So, it's, I just want to make sure that, you know, these don't get built without bike parking spaces. And then, you don't have an opportunity to park anywhere.
To Harold's point, I think, you're saying a parking space or two, as opposed to one per 10, just makes sense.
And that, yes.
I actually happen to like the way that Rockville did this, because it establishes, if I'm reading this correctly, minimum standards that, that businesses have, businesses and residential developments will have to adopt. Did you speak to anybody there about how they came up with these?
Not yet.
No, so...
And I wanted to know what approach you wanted me to take, and if you have any other examples, please look online and share with me, so we can discuss as a group, yes.
I wasn't, I'm, no, it's okay, go ahead. No, it's fine, good.
I 100% agree with Harold. I think giving them the standards or making businesses do this and say they need 40 bike spaces or whatever, that's land that may not get used for bikes, and then you have to send business owners, we're supposed to be business-friendly. I love Howard's idea of just saying one space or two spaces dedicated to bikes, and then let the customers dictate. If the customers are riding their bikes and they need more space, they're going to complain to the store, and let that dictate what the store proceeds.
And I think, right.
And then, the government insisting you need this much space, and it may or may not get used.
Right, and I think, to the point of that, I think, we're looking at Rockville like, wow, they did this. You have to take into effect the, to account the topography of the town. Stratford's long. It's, you know, we don't know what Rock, how Rockford is structured, so to just say, "Oh, we'll do it this way," it has to be based on the topography of the town, how the town's set up.
Well, I will tell you, Maryland is much more sophisticated than we are with our bike...
Right, there's a layout.
...transportation to begin with.
Right.
So, they're, what they're talking here are bike lockers. We have just approached that idea at the train station of having bike lockers. It would eventually be a very good thing for us to mandate in multifamily housing of any kind, because they don't have places to store their bikes. So, a locker like that would be something excellent to put into any, any new housing that's built. But what I'm interested, because these bike racks are telling people that it's okay to start riding your bike, and it's okay to start thinking about a multimodal way of transportation. It doesn't, I mean, it also is going to help us get those stripes done on existing roads. We've got to start somewhere, and we've got to start somewhere that's affordable. If, if we were to put in here bike lockers, we then have to decide, we have to say what those lockers are, and that's a huge investment. If you go into Boston, any place where there's heavy snow, they have lockers, because they have to have them. We need them at the train station, but I think that can be handled as part of a train station project. I think, long-term, it should be part of new housing that's being built. But what I'm, I think, my feeling strongly is that we need to come up with some kind of zoning that says, if you're doing any work on your parking lot, if you're doing any striping, if you're building a new facility, any kind of renovation, you now have to put in this bike rack. You've got to put in a space, and you've got to put in bike racks. And if you want to do it, I don't know if we could ever, you know, a tax credit would be a fabulous thing to talk about, but that's beyond our league.
Where does this go from here? Is this something you recommend in zoning?
It should actually come from zoning to planning and then go back to zoning, but it typically, it's only when the process makes sense, to me, only when an applicant applies for a zone change or a text amendment, they go to zoning, and then it gets referred to planning for opinion, and then goes back. But in this case, we are a long-range planning advisory group, so it doesn't hurt to think about this in the long term, what happens in the next 10 years, I mean, how our developments would impact this bike ridership. I agree with you all. I mean, I think for Stratford to start thinking about some basics before, you know, going into in-depth about these by uses makes sense, because I don't want this to get defeated right in the first shot. So, I like the way that Sustainable Land Use Code Project, the start has, you know, at least two bicycles for at least, for each 10 vehicle parking spaces, over 20 parking spaces in the T O D Core District, and then for at least one additional bicycle in the T O D Ring District. So, we have to define, you know, maybe in the T O D District, and then in half-mile from T O D District as the Ring District, because that's where the majority of the retail industrial are concentrated. And that way, we are saying, okay, if you're, if a supermarket is having 70 parking spaces, then one for every 20 means you need to provide like at least, you know, three or four, you know, bike parking spaces. So, it doesn't mean bicycle space, but four parking spaces, actual parking spaces, which can accommodate, maybe each parking space can accommodate, like, if you think about it, it's 8 by 16, so, but the bicycles are only seven feet by two or something. So, you can accommodate a stack in those parking spaces. So, you'll have a really nice cool shed where you can have a bunch of bikes. And maybe we can say that, you know, these have to be located a certain way, like, you know, 50 feet off of the accessway, and maybe, you know, encourage coward parking spaces where feasible, so they're protected in all-weather events, and they're securely locked, stuff like that, that makes this, you know, not like people are just dumping those bikes in the spaces, but they're actually logically creating a space for these bicycles. And start with the basics, and then eventually, we can see how the ridership is picking up, and maybe come back to an amendment at some point.
I like that they're starting small, because I think that will always align with this property costs people money, and the business owner, whether it's a grocery store or a clothing, they're the ones that have to say, "Is this feasible for me? Should I buy this property development, and then somebody's going to force me to use my space for something I don't want to do?" But starting small, not only is it more, more impactful to people, whether it's people voting on it, or people that have to implement it, but also when we start seeing it all in town, as you said, especially putting it in people's minds, and maybe then moving out, maybe then moving out later.
And I really think we should... And I really think we should do something, because there are at least two or three pre-application reviews we had in the, um, last one and a half month. And all of these developments, we were, I was asking, can you accommodate bike spaces? And they were nice enough to say, yes, we would do that. But we, legally, we cannot make them do that, if they don't do it. And this is an opportunity to make them do that.
Something in place, so it's not legal, but it's something in our language or code.
In our regulations. And it'll tell them exactly how many, so they're not estimating, overestimating or underestimating, but they're doing what we require them to do, at, at the very least. But it, by law, you know, they can file a lawsuit, um, at the worst. If sometimes, you know, some communities add amendment that this has to be done, but there is no regulation in place, it's gonna be legally liable. So, you do, you know, you do need a regulation if you really wanna see an interest there. Well, we are talking about twenty parking spaces or more. So, if a business is as small, like, uh, a retail use that has less than twenty spaces, they wouldn't even be required to do that. We are talking about those big businesses, like, um, for example, LA Fitness, Stop &amp; Shop, places like that, where you have huge expanses of parking, but we don't have a facility where people can also ride a bike.
May I speak for the bike rider? Because none of this makes, if, if we don't have consistent places to park your bike, people aren't gonna use their bike to go to those stores. If we wanna get people out of their cars, walking and riding, then we need to have those facilities there. It's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar investment in a bike rack. It's not a huge amount of money. I've spoken to store owners around here who'd said, if I knew I could do it, I would do it in a second. Because they know it brings people in. Um, the ice cream stores, all of those places, they would gladly do it. I also think that we've gotta find a way to write this in such a way that it encourages bike racks in front of all commercial establishments. Anyplace where someone would go in on it. Because otherwise, we're not really creating the multimodal version of, it's no good if you get on your bike and say, I'm gonna go to this store to shop and then say, I can't park my bike anywhere. That means you can't go into that store, because there is no safety for your bike. And no one's gonna, just like in your car, no one's gonna park their bike a half a mile away or even two blocks away to go into that store and do whatever they need to do, whether it's food or shopping. It's not gonna happen. Stratford's a safe town, but it's not, people are not total dopes when it come to that.
So, I can, may, if I may suggest, um, I request everyone in this group to go back and research more on what you like to see. Like, maybe Ms. Zalik has a different idea of how this should be implemented versus, mm, others. And send me some examples, send the whole group some examples, so we can take a look. And then I can probably come up with a draft write-up for Stratford for next month, uh, based on that. And then we can discuss again. And if we are comfortable, we'll also discuss this with the zoning commission, parallely, and see their interest. And I'll try to identify what they would like to see in the town as well. And then, you know, based on all these discussions, we can write something, hopefully, for Stratford that makes sense in the short term.
And one further comment, uh, about whether this is something we should be doing or not. The tradition of planning is that we, we are the ones who propose, who send forward ideas to zoning. Whether it's in the law or not, that has been our tradition. That we do some of the work that they, in their daily, in their monthly business agenda, don't have the time to do. That they would much rather react to something versus sitting down and doing the work. We are considered to be the body that, that plans, that does the work for that. So, I think this is exactly what we should be doing.
We can, if you want, we can move forward to the Village TOD too.
I think we should.
Um, unfortunately, I couldn't, uh, work a lot on the TOD, uh, you know, the village overlay district draft guidelines that I wanted to. I needed help from a volunteer, so we can compile a list of stakeholders between, uh, our TOD boundary that, on, yeah, Barnum Avenue to Paradise Green, to reach out to all the property owners in that stretch. Uh, and distribute the stakeholder survey that we have here and seek their input and see if they're willing to attend a meeting, um, to discuss their concerns about the density that is recommended in the draft, um, guidelines here. And have a meaningful conversation before we actually push this forward to zoning. And if there's somebody, it's, if it's in your district, or if somebody can assist with that, that'll be great.
We're talking about the overlay district.
Yes, the overlay district. And, um, if you look in your package, um, I have, at the end, a stakeholder questionnaire, which is vision questions. What is your vision for Barnum Main Street Corridor? What would define success for this project? What will worry, but, but, what would you worry about this? Do you prefer to see large or small display windows? Stuff like this, yes.
So, just to be clear, the audience for these questions are, um, commercial property owners or?
All the property owners between the edge.
Yep.
The TOD boundary to the north of Barnum Avenue. It just covers one sliver of parcels, and it ends there, the TOD district, from there to Paradise Green.
Okay. And the volunteer would help you just sort of let, let those property owners know that you're looking to do a stakeholder meeting?
Yes.
That these are the kinds of questions and, okay.
And maybe distributing this and reaching out to them and talking to them. There's only so many hours for us and, as a staff, and with all that is going on, unfortunately, we need help to spread this.
What's the timeframe that you would like this project?
Well, we can take it, um, bite-size, we don't have to do it all at once. So, one month, we can just gather meaningful survey input. Then one month, we can, you know, invite these people for, you know, in-office discussion. And I'll arrange the room two-one-three, and I'll, you know, also invite some of the zoning commission members, so everyone can sit in and discuss.
Okay.
Yes. Just the linear stretch, not the radial. Just everybody that fronts on Main Street, with their properties on Main Street. We are not including them in this overlay overlay. Yes, but these are the immediate stakeholders. They have a stake in the project. We can invite the neighbors for, you know, public hearing, when we are at that point, where we have some draft recommendations. But we are actually, these people own the property, and they will have a stake in the project, because the changes to the, uh, zoning regulations would mean they can only do so much or so. You know, they can, there's a change in how they would read about their property.
So, there will be, there will be a residential stakeholder, um.
There will be a public input session, I would say. Uh, but this is key stakeholders. And then you reach out, you know, when you're at a point, when you're comfortable in presenting to the wider, larger audience, that's when you reach out to the.
When you say stakeholder, you're talking on the right side, St. Vincent's Hospital.
Yes.
Bank. Now, in between there, there are a couple of multifamily houses. So, you're talking just to commercial owners, not those.
We're talking to all property owners.
Could we get a map, a simple little map, pull-up map, to show us?
Yes, I did, uh, give it to the last.
In there.
Right.
And, and there's some, some of those houses are actually historic. So, there's a mix of everything in there, which is actually something we should be pretty proud of. But I think we should find a way to keep that mix.
And it's on both sides.
Part of what makes that little section nice.
Because on the left side, you're talking all kind of medical buildings, so.
But it, it, zoning doesn't affect anything that exists right now. If and when a property owner comes to make changes to the property, that's when they look at zoning and go, okay, I have to now create a sm, a larger display window, uh, to make it more pedestrian scale. Or I have to provide outdoor seating. Stuff that, you know, is recommended in the new regulation would apply for any future changes to the property. Just because we are adopting a village overlay district doesn't mean things will turn overnight. But in the next five or ten years, you might see a gradual change to make it more pedestrian scale.
Can we ask that a change be made here? That, we're calling this a core village district, we're calling it adjacent to the Todd overlay zone. It is very confusing if all we're really talking about is the Paradise Corridor. Because the Paradise Corridor is very different than the Barnum Corner.
Yes.
And in the original overlay district that we talked about a couple of years ago, it included both. And those are two separate economic stress factors that we need to look at.
And this is a pilot. The one between Main Street, um, on Main Street until Paradise is the first phase of village overlay. If this becomes successful, I think all commercial corridors should adopt it, including Lordship and, um, you know, other parts of the town. But this is the, you know, this is pilot only for the reasons that you have phase one of complete streets coming all the way till Barnum, which the phase two will extend to Paradise Green. It only makes sense to a distant, uh, you know, um, continue that pedestrian scale environment until Paradise Green. And, uh, connect Paradise Green to Heart's Corner and make it as one solid Main Street in the town. And then eventually, you know, the hope is that we do it for Stratford Avenue, Barnum Avenue, Lordship, and other, you know, commercial corridors in the town.
I, I hear you when you say that, that you're referring to the property owners as the key stakeholders here. But I'm reading through these questions, and these, all of these questions are questions, I think, that should be asked of residents as well. Um, things like, what's your vision for this corridor? I mean, uh, that, I, before, I feel like, I, I, I hear what you're saying about having a public hearing, once there's something to present. But that kind of, um, that kind of engagement with the public, with these questions in particular, I feel it's really important to ask residents there who will be living with the, the end result and the consequences, um, of whatever it is that we move forward with. Um, so, I, I would just like to state that I, uh, as this ha, is happening in the district that I represent, I would want to see, um, I would want to see residents, um, engaged in a similar manner. I know that's extra work, but, um, I, I feel like they need to be involved early on and not at the time when we're presenting something, when the train has left the station, no pun intended.
I, we also, we're gonna run into the same problem we have with all of our commercial corridors. That because of the way Stratford's, well, not just Stratford, towns all across the country, but particularly the Paradise Corridor is solid back, on the backside, except for a two-block area is solid residential. So, we cannot do a project like this without bringing in those voices. And I will tell you, I live a block and a half off Paradise.
But that's not what I heard. That, what I heard, what I heard was that these questions, what, were specifically going to be asked of property owners who are gonna be engaged, just, commercial, uh, along that, just along that corridor.
I agree with you.
Sanders' point, it's not just that, that street that's going to be affected.
Right.
So.
So, since it is your district?
Yeah.
If you have any ideas on how we can spread the word.
And his district.
And.
And my district. And I, 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 I'm thinking of our, of our retired councilman, Matt Catalano, who lives on that area in a beautiful old home that was at one time a pharmacy. But that whole block is commercial.
Yeah.
Beautiful, beautiful, classic homes. But we have to recognize that any of those homes could be torn down right now for commercial buildings.
Right.
So, we, we don't have possession of what is, what makes that stretch so beautiful is not in our control. We, we don't. We can't.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So, we, we've got to find some way to.
So, I mean, we have a lot of, um, past examples about how to go about that, um, from the Brownfields', um, public engagement work that was done when we got our first EPA grant, um, to the, uh, community charrettes and workshops that we did with the TOD, um, when we were first looking at the, at TOD in Stratford. I mean, we have, we have examples that we could use.
That'll be nice if I can, you know, I, I just need to know the lay of the land.
Sure.
Who, how to engage these people and get some input, so we can actually draft something that meets everybody's expectations.
And I might have a couple of volunteers, um, for you to help with this, so.
That'll be very nice.
And I also think that we can do this in a way that, part of, one of the ideas that we can sell is that we want to find a way to protect and enhance what's there. That we're not talking about coming in there with what was on Lordship Boulevard, you know, six-story apartments that went for two and a half miles, that became a canyon. I, I, I do not assume that that's what we're talking about. I know from other conversations back when this documents were written in 2017, that was not what we were talking about here. We're trying to find something that falls between the two, that can accommodate more housing, accommodate more commercial, in a village kind of fashion. Basically, we're talking about ground floor, commercial, and two floors of housing above it. So, if we were to integrate that into the existing, what's there, it would be different than our current zoning, which is asking everything to be jammed right up against the street. Uh, but again, we're, we're, most of these roadways are all state roads, where we're gonna end up, no matter what, thirty feet. But they also are perfect for complete streets. So, I think the complete street section that would go through that will be more effective than the complete streets that goes through, through the lower part of town right now, because it actually lends itself to it a lot better, yes.
But that area there is, is basically a transit way to get from downtown to the outer places. So, it's a high-traffic, high-speed area. I don't understand how you would wanna.
There's a thirty, there's a thirty-foot right-of-way on either side.
So, you would be on that right-of-way?
Yeah, it'll all go on the right-of-way.
Okay, so, but you would have turn-ins and things, wouldn't you? Where now you don't really.
This is, that's all out of our control, that's part of the state. The state makes those decisions. What they wanna do is, they wanna lower the speed on it, and they wanna force slower speeds. They do that, the state does. They wanna, they wanna lower the speed limit on that section by doing, um, uh, uh, speed dampening. Things that cause you to have to pull out if you wanna turn. Things that cause, that, the, the lanes become narrower, so you don't feel as comfortable doing fifty miles.
Right, but then that's gonna bottleneck downtown, because that's the only thoroughfare out of Stratford.
I, I would agree with you partly in principle, but in reality, traffic studies all across the country have said, have shown that it doesn't. When you slow traffic down, you essentially, the effects, the side effects extend beyond that area. That you, you generally tend to cause the traffic to go more smoothly in the whole area around it. That's, that's a natural side effect, which is why they are so insistent on trying to do it more and more and more. Because what we need to do is change people's attitudes, that this is not just a drive-through. This is our center of our town.
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but I also have been through there, and it's hard to get through there, and I don't know, by slowing it down, where are you going? Where, where else would you go? There is no other way to get that way, other than, it's in turn, but there is no other way.
If you slow the.
To go up Main, up Main Street, and it, and at Paradise Green at Forks, there was no other way to get there.
I agree, I understand, I understand.
So, where would they go if you slowed that down and make it more?
They will go more.
Commercial.
No, seriously, there'd be less stop and go.
Yeah.
That's the result of traffic calming, is there's less stop and go. Because you, you all go much more smoothly in that sense.
I agree, disagree. But I hear you, okay, I got you.
I think we're done.
I think we're done. Anybody have anything, new business they wanna bring up before we close? If we want to add anything to the agenda, we need to tell you two weeks in advance?
Yeah, that'll be great. Um, also, I will let you know if you have any public hearing items. I mean, I'm thinking that we'll have a busy month from next month onwards.
I am going to meet with all the chairs of all of the commissions and all the chairs of any of the boards are meeting on March the tenth. Uh, we are meeting with the Economic Development Commission, and we are meeting with, I think, the coastal, the coastal and. and we are meeting with, I think, the coastal, the coastal and economic development people, in order for us to actually learn a little bit what each of these land boards, what their focus is. So hopefully, that will help in terms of, of focusing in on things. But I will also then, at that meeting, try very much to get our land boards that deal with wetlands and marshlands and coastal. I would like planning to sit and talk with them about where the strains are for them, where we can help them and help better understand what they're trying to do.
From that meeting, could it be included in the agenda for our next meeting that you can give us like a truncated ten-minute synopsis?
No, I wanna get them in here to talk to us.
Oh, oh, okay.
I, I, that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna invite them and see which, what, the next meeting that we can have. I could do that at any point, right, if I say that. I know that some of them are really, they want to. One of them came to me and asked if they could come and talk with us. That's old.
It's a very old one. It's just a draft that was done. We have to revise that. I think it's March, March seventeenth.
So I will have completed that meeting by that time.
I mean, that's kind of a high holy day.
It is?
Saint Patrick's Day.
All right, you could all bring your shamrocks on for that day. And hopefully, the planning, I mean, hopefully, there will be a meeting, or we'll hear something on the Greenway. I went today and spent a good part of the day rereading every single document that had anything to do with Greenway on the planning page. If you go into the planning page, you will see a two-hundred, two thousand and eight document, you'll see a two thousand and thirteen document, you'll see a two thousand and fifteen document, you'll see complete streets in two thousand and seventeen, you'll see every report on, on greenways, bikeways, and complete streets that the town has done. I ask everybody, please go through it and look at it. In particular, there's one document, if you want the shorthand version, if you give me one moment to find my note. There's one document that has information. The Complete Streets 2017 Policy. That's a Complete Streets document that was proposed by me three years ago to the town council to adopt a Complete Streets policy, which is what we need in order to get Complete Streets funding. They did not adopt it in full the way I'd hoped, but they adopted a good portion of it. There essentially is no reporting back on it, which is the missing piece that we need. But it will happen at some point. But if you go into it, it really gives you a very good sense. There's a whole, there's a whole section on all the plans we came up with for complete streets. You'll see all the different roads in town that we had chosen as our first five phases. But below that, you'll see several, several maps that show town-wide all of the, all of the current proposed bike paths. You'll, you'll hopefully understand how comprehensive that really is. Enough of my Greenway speaking. Thank you, everybody.
Second.
We're closed until March.